Longer. At this time, we'll call to order our regular meeting. At five something. Let's start off with our pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Cuevas, will you lead us, please?
Certainly. Please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. Roll call. We do have everybody here. Councilmember Uwer is online with us. And I think so we're good with that. At this time, we're going to go with our citizen comments. This period of bright opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on agenda. Do we have any public hearings tonight? No, no public hearing. So if you want to address the council, we ask you to come up and state your name and address, and we'll give you a three-minute time to address this on anything you'd like.
Hi, I'm Trudy Donovan. And did you say address?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we live at 2011 Fifth Street.
Do we have the mic on? Okay. Bear with us just a second so it can get recorded, please. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind stating your name again, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm Trudy Donovan. And we live at 2011 Fifth Street, Wenatchee. I know we have quite a speeding problem in Wenatchee, but on Fifth Street, I have been talking to different people since 2022 after a car drove through our rock wall and on our yard went airborne. And then just Sunday, a deer got hit, which he wasn't right in the middle of the road because the blood is over on the sidewalk. But an officer had to put him out of his misery. But there's people that walk and ride bikes, kids that are on skateboards. And we're kind of leery of even going out to our mailbox. And it's all hours of the day, cars, trucks, and a lot of time at night. I mean, they're doing. My husband said I could only say 60-plus. I swear to God, it's a lot more. And we just wait to hear a crash. But I talked to Emma Honeycutt first, and she talked about doing a speed study. And that just took a long, long, long time. I don't know if one was ever done. And then I talked with top, a little bit, not talk, but email, I think. And he was going to bring it up at a meeting. And then Sergeant Eric Vasquez, because he does the traffic. And now I don't hear anything from him. But when I did talk to him, there were a couple people stopped. But it's dangerous, and someone's going to get hurt.
Thank you, Trudy. You passed the college? Is that where you are? Past Western?
Yes, and past Western. And as soon as they, like, hit that little canal, the irrigation canal? Pedal to the metal.
We will make sure somebody gets a hold of you. So I'm going to ask our chief of police. He's actually back there. And we'll make sure we get in contact with you, okay?
Okay, okay. And if there's anything we can do, we'll do it.
You're doing what you need to do.
Okay.
So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Dale Mahoney. I live on Fifth Street, 2036 Fifth Street. I don't know which one of y'all is my council member, but this is the second time we've had a deer get killed in the driveway. Happened Sunday night. One o'clock in the morning, get a phone call. Actually, it was a phone call. He knocked on the door and said, hi, we got to shoot a deer in your front yard. Actually, my driveway. Second time in 20 years. I've lived there since '01, back when Philippines was a orchard. Anyway, the traffic has gotten nothing but worse since I've been there. I've seen a lot of crazy things up and down that street. Seen the police come out and put up the little sign that says, you're going too fast. Absolutely mind-numbingly ineffective. I've talked to the city about manholes out front that needed welded down or fixed due to the cars hitting them and clinking all the time. They said, how about doing a speed study? I said, great idea, do that. Didn't happen. The only way to slow those folks down out there is to write some tickets. And I mean a whole book of tickets, bunches of tickets. There's only so many folks that live up that hill from there. And believe me, you give out 40, 50, 60 tickets, and they're going to get the message. The other thing that I don't know if anybody's considered or not, but Philippines is supposed to develop that property back there. We're looking at Phase A was supposed to be another 147 houses. Where's all that traffic going up and down Fifth Street? So my recommendation is you put a roundabout up there where it connects onto Fifth Street. That'll slow them down quite a bit. So if you have the police chief come out, I'd appreciate it if he'd knock on the door and talk to me about it. We can put one heck of a speed trap up right there. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments, and we'll go to our consent items. I retain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and to approve the final voucher certificate for the Broadview Improvements Project Number 2107 and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract voucher certificate.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Osteen and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings and approve the final voucher certificate for the Broadway Improvement Project Number 2107 and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract voucher certificates. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. To our action items.
Can we, Kelsey, can you hear us?
Yeah, I got you. All right.
We just didn't hear you on that last motion.
Yep, I'm good. Aye, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And tonight, I have before you a resolution Number 202502. This is declaring an emergency and authorizing city staff to perform some emergency work. So to kind of describe what happened, I have a very short presentation. Thank you, Beth. All right, so we started off the year not as we anticipated, but on January 6th, Monday, there was a sinkhole discovered. And as you can see from this picture, it was much bigger than what it appeared from the surface. So on Monday, this is about what it looked like. And this is on Old Station Road in front of the North Central Educational School District Office between Eisenhardt and Euclid. And on that Monday afternoon, we weren't quite sure where all the water was coming from, but we could see a lot of water coming into that manhole. That manhole is actually very deep. It's about 20 feet deep. And we have our regional water main. There's a beauty water main. We have our force main, which, as I mentioned in my agenda report for the Old Station area, which we'll look at in a minute. All of the water drains by gravity to the Old Station Lift Station, which is about a block from here, and then is pumped into Wenatchee along Old Station Road and then across the bridge to McKittrick Street. So what started as just a small pothole in the road ended up being a much larger situation. We did some testing Tuesday, January 7th, in the morning just to try and verify where that water was coming from and pretty much quickly confirmed that it was coming from that force main. So shut down the lift station, and we spoke with the mayor and the public works director, got the authorization to continue to move forward with the emergency work. We contacted Hearst Construction, and have to say, they responded so promptly. We really appreciated their quick response. We called them about 10:00, 10:30 in the morning, and then by 5:00 o'clock, they already had equipment out there digging. So very quickly to respond to that situation. So again, the seriousness of it was is this is the area that was affected. So everybody who's on sewer in that red outlined area essentially goes to that lift station. And there really is no other way other than through that lift station and that force main to get into Wenatchee. So this is what really was the basis for that emergency was we had to keep services provided for this area. So on that seventh, this is the night of the seventh, they began excavating. We also, at the same time, to continue to be able to provide sewer services to customers, we had a five vector trucks that were basically acting like the lift station and physically transporting the wastewater from Old Station into McKittrick Street and dumping it into the sewer. They, over the course of about 36 hours, they hauled 1.19, 500 million gallons, about 1.2 million gallons, which is like two of our city pools full of wastewater in those trucks. We also had some wonderful support from our partners across the river, Douglas County Sewer District. They helped us out by providing their vector truck and crew as well. And also, I want to recognize all the businesses at Old Station that we reached out to that were willing to slow down some of their discharges or hold on to some of their wastewater discharges until we could get this resolved. So overall, the response from our community, from our customers, from our partners, was fantastic and really helped us to get through this emergency very quickly. One of the other things that made this also very challenging, and again, why we ended up, you know, we respond to leaks all the time with our crews. This one was unique, not only because of how quickly it needed to happen, but also how deep it was. So the sewer force main was roughly 19 to 20 feet deep. And so for perspective, the ceilings in here are about 19 feet. So if you think about how big that hole had to be and having to get people down into the bottom of that hole to be able to repair that force main, so. All right, so here's some pictures. Also like to say, you know, the amount of time it took, the crews had to also work very carefully because that trench is so deep, it's very dangerous. So they had to be careful how they navigated their shoring. And of course, because it was so deep, it also ended up getting pretty wide as well. These are some pictures of what we found when we got down to that pipe. There were two sections that were broken. There was one 13-foot section that was cracked laterally between the pipe and the gasket. Between two sections of pipe had also rolled out. And then the next section of pipe had also gotten cracked. Not really sure exactly what happened, but we have theorized that potentially it may have been broke during construction or may have been compromised. And then over time, where it had been stressed previously, it eventually failed. So we were able to get that repaired. And again, you know, local vendors, too. They did a great job. We had folks that were relaying parts from Yakima up to Ellensburg. And then we were, people were picking them up from Ellensburg, bringing them to Wenatchee so that we get parts very quickly. So everything just went probably as best as it could go with regards to having folks available, having crews, people coming in to help us out, and then getting the parts that we needed very quickly. So this was by Thursday night, or Thursday, we were back in service. So it took about 39 hours total before we were able to turn the pump station back on again. And then it took a few days to kind of fill in that big hole. And this is the temporary. You can see in front of there, we've got some cold mix out there. And we've continued to fence off the landscape area that got disturbed during the project. So the contract with Hearst Construction was for $200,000. And we are still kind of bringing in all of the total costs. So I'll get a total cost to you guys once we figure out what that is. And we will also have to do some restoration work. But given the current weather conditions, we'll probably be coming back this summer or fall to finish up, you know, putting landscaping back and then also paving the road because right now, this is just temporary. But the road is open. It was open the week following this all starting. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I know, we talked about this before, but incredible work for everybody. It is like, I don't care, you can name any department, police, IT, whatever. Everybody was like, hey, we got to figure this out together. And really, it just really, terrible circumstances. I just really felt great about our community and about your team. And everybody reached out and says, what can we do? What can we do? What can we do? So anyway, very impressive.
Definitely a team effort.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you to everybody that helped.
Any other questions or? Okay.
Just great job. With that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2025-02 declaring an emergency and authorizing city staff to hire a contractor to perform the necessary repair work on the broken sewer force main in the 400 block of Old Station Road.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osteen and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve Resolution Number 2025-02 declaring an emergency and authorizing city staff to hire a contractor to perform the necessary repair work on the broken sewer force main in the 400 block of Old Station Road. Any other comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we got? Oh, sorry. Kelsey.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and councils. Kelsey Grover, stormwater technician. And this evening, I bring to you a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator's signature on an interlocal agreement for a mock audit related to our regional stormwater management program and permit compliance with Shaland County, Douglas County, and East Wenatchee. So all of our local jurisdictions are covered under the Eastern Washington Phase Two municipal stormwater permit. In 2004, the four jurisdictions of the valley entered into a memorandum of understanding to form the Wenatchee Valley Stormwater Technical Advisory Committee. And the idea of this group was to effectively use local funding and grants to protect water quality of the Wenatchee and Columbia rivers. Through this memorandum of understanding, we have adopted and developed a stormwater management program regionally and consistent regulations throughout the valley. Throughout, through this program, we have collaborated over the years on education and outreach, illicit discharge detection and elimination, staff training, and our local effectiveness studies. Tonight, we're proposing to enter into an interlocal agreement to work with a consultant, again, with Shaland County, Douglas County, East Wenatchee, and ourselves, to perform a mock audit or a gap analysis of our stormwater management program. This will be done to assess the compliance with our previous permit, which was in effect from 2019 to 2024, the current permit, which will be in effect from 2024 to 2029, and the UIC, or underground injection control requirements, and determine an actionable plan to move forward and assess gaps in our program and what we can do to assess or to fill our near-term requirements. For this project, our staff time will include collecting the data and passing that to our consultant selected and participating in our interviews. The funds for this interlocal agreement and the funding will come from the Stormwater Utility, or Fund 410. And the city will lead and execute the contract with the selected consultant. We'll split the costs evenly among the four jurisdictions and the cost for this interlocal agreement, which will be in effect till approximately October of 2025. And those costs will not exceed 50,000 per jurisdiction. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So is Wenatchee paying for all of this upfront?
And then we will, we will receive payment back from the other jurisdictions, similar to how we've done some of our previous effectiveness studies and other work that we've done interlocally.
Okay.
So is the audit required? Or is it so that we can meet the conditions of the permit?
So this isn't, it's not a required exercise, as I'll speak to in just a few minutes or in a moment with our next agenda item. The purpose of this is we have a lot of new requirements with this new permit. And there are new requirements that are going to be pretty heavy on staff time and some of the, some of the new activities that we're going to have to do. So essentially, it's a planning exercise. How do we move forward and meet those requirements in the best way possible so that we're not only meeting our requirements, but serving our community as best and using our funding as best as we can?
Good idea. So with that, I'll move for City Council to authorize the city administrator's signature on the interlocal agreement for the mock audit related to regional stormwater management and permit compliance with Shaland County, Douglas County, and East Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember, help me out, Broja Steen, thank you. For City Council to authorize the city administrator's signature on the interlocal agreement for the mock audit related to regional stormwater management and permit compliance with Shaland County, Douglas County, and East Wenatchee. Any other discussion or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. You get to stay here.
I'm just going to stay here. So now, on that note, I bring forth a motion for City Council to approve the professional service agreement with Evergreen Storm H2O for the regional stormwater management program and permit compliance mock audit and authorize the city administrator's signature. So as I mentioned, our current permit is now in effect and became effective on August 1st of 2024. This new permit brings forward a lot of new requirements for us to protect and improve water quality of the Columbia and Wenatchee rivers as well as waters of the state. So we're not the only one subject to these permit requirements. These new permit requirements expand our education and outreach requirements. We're expanding the audiences, the target audiences that we're looking at and needing to provide stewardship opportunities for the community. Our illicit discharge detection and elimination program will also be expanding to specific materials and things that we'll have to look at and respond to that may, may involve like PCBs and other broad chemicals that we haven't really had to deal with before. We'll also see new requirements for our development and post-construction stormwater controls. And our operations and maintenance program will also be growing, and we'll be seeing new requirements for that. So the Regional Stormwater Group has selected the Evergreen Storm H2O to complete our mock audit or a gap analysis. And the purpose of this is to identify and summarize all of the activities that we've done previously. What did we do to meet the terms and conditions of the 2019 to 2024 permit? And what's coming? And how do we plan for those? And what gaps do we have? And planning for those activities, how do we assess those gaps? And what do we need to do to meet those requirements in the future? So to do that, they'll be collecting all of the data from us. And they'll do it for the other jurisdictions as well. And we're doing this as a team effort because we do implement so many of our program elements regionally, like our education and outreach and some of our other, some of the other activities. So they'll do a deep dive into all of our documentation as well as do some staff interviews to look at the processes that we go through. So our consultant estimates that this service is going to be $197,148. And again, as I said previously with the ILA, this will be divided equally among the four jurisdictions. And we're not anticipating that we'll go past that and so it'll, our ILA indicates we'll stick right around 50,000 each. And again, this will come from the Stormwater Utility Fund 410. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, you've probably already done your work on this, but just confirming that the Evergreen Group can get you to what you need to satisfy.
They, they can. We've worked with, we've worked with some of the staff from Evergreen multiple times previously. They've done a gap analysis exercise with us, or some of their staff have done this exercise with us before. And we learned a lot out of it. And it was really beneficial for planning for our future permit activities.
With that, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the professional service agreement with Evergreen Storm H2O for the regional stormwater management program and permit compliance mock audit and authorize the city administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson and second by Councilmember Hornby for City Council to approve the professional service agreement with Evergreen Storm H2O for the regional stormwater management program and permit compliance mock audit and authorize the city administrator's signature. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Mike Hodgson. I'm the Stormwater Treatment Supervisor. And I have two action items tonight. The first one's with Gray and Osborne for a motion to City Council approve Amendment Number One to the current 2024 On Call Sewer Stormwater Technical Support Agreement with Gray and Osborne and authorize city administrator's signature. Included in this amendment are upgrades to the older portion of the drying bed project that was built in 1991. The drains, originally, there was eight drying beds, and we converted it to four for more room. But the drain system, the drains themselves and the drying beds are failing. They've just come to the end of their life. And we got a design proposal from Gray and Osborne for $55,000. And we got a, a design proposal from Gray and Osborne for, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars, and this would take their, uh, uh, original contract over the hundred thousand to one oh five. Um, the original drains, they didn't have grading, which I don't understand really why. Um, and it was just a drain rock, fabric, and then some sand. And coincidentally, they fit, uh, or a loader tire from a nine thirty-eight cat fits perfect in them. So there's perforated pipe, pipe underneath, which I'm sure is compromised, but we'd have some, uh, H twenty grading, which is, you know, heavy vehicle rated, and a new drain system. And along with this, uh, improvement to the drying beds, there'll be either a pre-engineered metal building or maybe a pole building, and this would be for storing our biosolids under the shelter, which is a requirement of the Washington State Department of Agriculture's permit to get our biosolids approved and certified as a fertilizer for residential commercial use.
And Mike, this was already brought up to the Public Works Committee last week, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So some of us already had it.
Any questions, Council?
Uh, just making sure that you think that this, uh, design can keep you from getting stuck in that stuff.
Guarantee it.
Thanks.
If that'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the professional service agreement with Ever, no, that's the wrong one. Motion for the City Council to approve Amendment Number One in the two thousand twenty-four On Call Sewer and Stormwater Technical Support Agreement with Gray, uh, Gray and Osborne, Inc., and authorize City Administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve Amendment Number One to the two thousand twenty-four On Call Sewer and Stormwater Technical Support Agreement with Gray and Osborne Incorporated and authorize the City Administrator's signature. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. You get to stay up here, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I like you guys. Okay, so this action item is, uh, for the motion of the City Council to approve a professional service agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group for the Waste Water Treatment Plan Facilities Plan, Plant? Facilities Plan Amendment and authorize City Administrator's signature. This has, uh, several bullet items, uh, six. Um, this is to further study the, uh, updated flow and loading projections that the Waste Water Treatment Plant is experiencing, and they're forecasted to be out to, uh, two thousand forty-seven. Um, you know, we had the Facilities Plan approved by City Council in twenty-two. It's been sitting in the Ecology's plate for almost three years. And when they finally came back with drafts at the end of twenty-four, they actually incorporated changes that the Ecology made in twenty-three and twenty-four. So Jacobs will take care of, um, updating the plan to meet their, uh, comments, which will also facilitate our, uh, discharge permit with Ecology, which has been expired since two thousand fifteen. There'll be some, uh, work in the, uh, process modeling for the secondary clarifier and the wastewater digester upgrade with a boiler heat exchanger replacement project. Uh, Jacobs will provide resource recovery technical assistance for the city, which is, goes hand in hand with, you know, the Project Jessica's kind of spearheading the wastewater industrial symbiosis. And it's a grant. How much is the grant, Laura?
She's, she's in way back there.
You don't remember? Is it five hundred thousand? I don't know. Okay, but there's some, uh, grant money. You should probably know that number, huh? Then actually, you know, with the, uh, the modifications for the plan with Ecology, they'll update the capital improvement project list, then they'll provide the final facility plan amendment. And then we'll present that to you before we send it to Ecology. And their, uh, contract, um, would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand and change.
Let's put Jessica on the spot here. Do you know the amount since it was a question? And then explain how the grant worked, if you don't mind, if you have that.
How much was that for the symbiosis? I'm embarrassed not to know.
It's okay. I don't know either.
We'll explain how, how, how we came about it.
Yes, so the grant, um, was actually managed by the Center for Sustainable Infrastructure out of Olympia, and we're partnered with, uh, Port Angeles, City of Spokane, and City of Vancouver. And we have not seen the final paperwork yet, so there will be more coming back to you guys, because there is a match required from that. And we're also applying for another grant from, um, the Regional Port Authority that'll help with that match. So at the end of the day, I'm estimating that the city's contribution will be between thirty or forty thousand dollars for this. And so, uh, through this, we'll be having, um, folks from Kalenborg, Denmark, who are kind of where wastewater industrial symbiosis started, coming to work with us and the regional port and industries here in town to talk about how we can recover some of our resources for the treatment plant and use them in the future brewery district on Columbia Street. So, um, that all will be happening over the next few months. And so you will hear more from us on that, because it's still in the very early phases. We've just had one meeting, and we haven't actually gotten all the paperwork yet on the grant. So I think the total grant is somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, but again, it's shared by four communities, and we haven't quite heard yet what exactly is our share. So more to come on that. So you're okay.
Perfect, perfect explanation.
Hey, yeah. I got one more question, and maybe it's Jessica if I could.
Probably.
Yeah.
So under fiscal impact on the overview or, you know, the sheet that we got in our packet, it talks about this, this comes out of Fund four oh five, and then talks about a project, uh, review current and projected revenues, and that you'd give back to us with it. Is that just information for us that, kind of what you're looking at there?
Yes, a couple of things on my list for this year is to, um, well, and this is something we started several years back, is every couple of years, we go back and we look at our financial, uh, we do a financial analysis of our utilities. So last year, we looked at, uh, we looked at stormwater. This year, we'll be looking at sewer and water, and so we'll be, as we kind of shift projects around or new projects come on, of course, those have a huge impact on our financing and where we're going. And it's always good to check in, right, if our rates and where our O and M costs are coming in at. And so, yes, you will be, this is kind of the beginning. We'll be working on updating our capital projects list, figuring out what's next, and then we'll be doing a financial analysis, and then we'll have that to come back to Council. Um, you know, we usually wait for the year to close and have all the financials done, and so we'll probably start that this spring, um, with a consultant, so.
Okay, great.
More to come.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? Get her while she's up here.
Your Honor, I'll, uh, make a motion for City Council to approve the professional services agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Facilities Plan Amendment and authorize the City Administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Roger Steen, and second by Councilmember Atkinson for City Council to approve the professional service agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Incorporated, for the Waste Water Treatment Plant Facilities Plan Amendment and authorize the City Administrator's signature. I'll, I'm gonna start off with a comment. I write, a lot of times I write down things when I connect with people. This guy's knowledgeable. He's humble. And he's just solid. He's like day-to-day, and I just wanna say that, and, uh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and I mean.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Oh, we get a project engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nicole Brockwell, project engineer, Public Works, um, here tonight for, on behalf of our South End Pike Ped Access Bridges Project, and to make a request, uh, for a motion for the City Council to authorize our city administrator, administrator to negotiate and execute Supplement Number Three with our consultant, Exel Tech Consulting, uh, to provide us with construction management services through the construction phase of the project. Uh, the final estimate or cost for this supplement is one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, this is a little less than what I included in the agenda report. Just a reflection is we refined this number a little bit over the last few days with the consultant. Uh, the supplement would bring the maximum amount payable for this third contract up to three million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. Um, I'd like to note that this was in the expected cost for these services, and it's within the budget that was adopted at our last council meeting of about seventeen point six million. We did bring this to Finance Committee earlier today. Um, and then just as a general update of just where we're at with the project. So, um, after our last council meeting, we issued our Notice of Bit Award to Apollo, Inc., um, and we're currently working through contracting, so just getting all the documents in order to execute a contract. Um, once we do so, uh, things will start happening pretty quickly. We should have our schedule within the next month or so, so we'll be able to understand what side of the river we're starting on, the sequencing of work, so we can better communicate what timeline of the impacts will be. Um, and we are still expecting work to start April first. So, um, happy to answer any questions on the project or anything about this supplement with the consultant.
I just wanna say that, uh, business owners down there are excited. They're asking me, when are you guys gonna start the project? When is this happening? We're anxious to cross over the bridge. I say, it's coming soon.
No, it's, uh, very soon, and, um, it's gonna be a lengthy construction. I mean, we're not expected to be done until the fall of twenty-six, but, you know, we're all very excited for these improvements, and then the additional improvements we have coming to those areas too, so.
It will be great. I will move for City Council to authorize the City Administrator to negotiate and execute Supplement Number Three with Exel Tech Consulting, Incorporated, for construction management services for the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridges Project, City Project Number two-two-zero-one-point-two.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Cuevas for City Council to authorize the City Administrator to negotiate and execute Supplement Number Three with Exel Tech Consulting, Incorporated, for construction management service for the South End Bike Pedestrian Access Bridge Project, City Project Number twenty-two oh-one-point-two. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Are you trying to rush to get home? Well, at this time, we are gonna do City Council interviews while we have everybody here.
We'll ask all the candidates to, um, go into the conference room, so.
Yeah, I was, just so we don't have to repeat it, everybody will get twenty minutes of, to provide responses for the questions that were listed. And then, uh, with the five questions, and one question will be provided, uh, during the interview session. So we're just gonna, we'll have a timer here for the twenty minutes when you come out, just so you know, and then try to time it right for you. And if you finish a little earlier, then you can talk about some other things, if you'd like to. So at this time, we did put it in, does everybody have the order that we are going with?
Yes, sir.
It should be in the agenda packet. Joseph Gamboni is first, followed by Catherine Hauser, then Myra Gomez, Richard Seal, and Juan By.
Perfect, so we're gonna have everybody get up and take you in the back room here. Just right back here, if you can follow Tammy, that'd be great.
Mike's asking if I'm at the door closing.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna hang out here.
I figured that.
What's the question, Mike? Uh, no, no, no. It's, it's, we're good. Thank you. Thank you for asking. So I think what we'll do, we'll just ask the questions in this order. So if you don't mind taking question one.
Sure.
Two, I'm gonna go, three, four, five, and Charlie, if you won't mind asking the, the last one twice. So that's how we'll do it in order, so. I think we're good. Um, all right, Mr. Gamboni, will you come up, please? Did we decide if, if, you can stand up, or we can shrink that thing to sit, sit down? It's up to, it's up to you.
I am fine standing.
Okay.
I wanna, I don't wanna mess up your computer.
All right.
I'm gonna say hi to.
You ready for me to start?
Hi to city staff, council members, and Mr. Mayor. Hello.
Hello. Thank you for being here.
I am nervous, and that nervous is good, because it, it indicates that this is important to me. It started out as just a suggestion after I finished, um, Planning Commission. I was saddened to learn that my twelve years was up, and I couldn't sit up there anymore and, and assist the city. And as I started down this road, it was just a goal at one point, but, or a thought, and as it's turned into a goal, it's become important enough to make me nervous as I stand there, which is not common for me. I am, uh, I am not the type of person that gets nervous in public speaking.
Okay, perfect. All right, we'll get with question one.
Okay, question number one. What qualifications, unique skills, or perspectives would you bring to the City Council? And what do you hope to achieve serving in this role?
Uh, qualifications, as I mentioned, I served on Planning Commission for twelve years. Worked with staff, worked with, worked with the other council member commissioners. And the, um, the, prior to that, I did four years of code enforcement. So for, for almost sixteen years, I've been helping make decisions on the city's behalf. The other qualification I have, which doesn't have to do with serving the city, is that I, I'm a veteran, and I'm a military dependent. So the first twenty-five years of my life was spent in six different countries and set, six different states, and almost twenty different houses. In all of the communities I've lived in, I've, I've seen what items work for the city and what items don't work. And I, of course, have my ideas of what I would like to see implemented in, you know, say what I saw in living in Turkey that didn't work so well. I don't wanna see that in, in Wenatchee, or something that I saw living in Colorado Springs. I would love to see in Wenatchee. So my experience of living in all those places, um, sets me up with goals that I want to see happen in Wenatchee. The, uh, I ha, I have notes, uh, jog my memory if I forget. Um, fifty-four years I've worked in the, I've been in the workforce. Thirty, more than thirty of those have been self-employed. One of the, of course, what comes out of that is the ability to run a budget, the ability to think critically, as opposed to just saying, you know, yes, we're gonna go that route. You have to think of the implications of it. So again, what I think qualifies me is, is, like I said, uh, that much time in the, in the workforce as a sole proprietorship. I, um, I, I work with a budget, and I keep things on budget. And I'm, I'll be budget-conscious if I'm sitting over there. That's that question.
Okay, Joseph. How would you address homelessness in Wenatchee? How would you engage with your other City Council members if you disagreed on this approach?
You could not come up with a more complex problem than homelessness. There is no, there will not be a one-size-fits-all answer. Of all the things that I did research on and, and worked on as, again, as a planning commissioner, this has been something I've been engaged in for probably well over seven or eight years, maybe ten years. I have polled my friends, I have polled my coworkers, I have been in discussions about this. The, the, the complexity of homelessness is a rabbit hole that, once you start studying it, you'll end up reading papers from Princeton, you'll end up reading papers in nineteen seventy, what Reagan did with the Health and Human Services Budget. You'll read papers of the decentralization of mental health institutions in nineteen eighty, I believe nineteen eighty. Health and Human Services Budget went from approximately eighty million down to nineteen million under Reagan, and that started a homeless, that started a housing crisis that turned into a homeless crisis. The point I'm making is that there's so much data on homelessness that the answer we're looking for is not an answer. There is a journey of answers that is going to take an input from as many as ten different agencies, probably more, federal government, state government, city government, private sector, charities, public sector. All of these people working together could possibly find an answer. One of the statistics that really bothered me was that when you interact with a homeless person, especially if it's a mentally, uh, mentally ill or struggling mentally, or a drug dependent, the input time on that person is more than five years before they're completely off the street. When you have an encampment like we did, and you have Catholic charities who have invested eighteen months on some individuals, and then we arbitrarily move that camp, thirty of those people were lost touch with. And so the clock goes all the way back to zero. You, you've given up the eighteen months that you've worked on them of that five-year period to get them off the street. I could go on way too long about homelessness. The second part of the question was, if you don't agree with a council member, how would you handle that? Disagreements among council members, disagreements among any, any conversationalist is, is always based on two things. An unfulfilled expectation or an undelivered communication. If I have an unfulfilled expectation of you, I'm going to disagree with you until I find out what that expectation was and resolve it with you. If you have an undelivered communication with me, like, damn it, I don't like you. That hasn't been, you haven't delivered that communication, so we will disagree until the communications get delivered. Once the communication is delivered and the. Once the communication is delivered and the expectation is fulfilled, you can work towards an answer. I could do an hour on homelessness, but I won't, we've got, I've got other questions.
Next question, Mr. Gamboni, with Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities, and public spaces? How would you prioritize competing needs?
So, I'm gonna do the second part of it first, and then, how would I prioritize? I would always start with health and safety issues. Health and safety is your, your sewer system, your water system, your power system. You go from health and safety to services, your roads, your sidewalks, your bike lanes, and health and safety, services, and then you go to amenities, public spaces, convention centers, quality of life. It is in that order that I would work them out, except for two reasons. If the state were to mandate something such as House Bill 1110, where the state is mandating we do, we do infill on all of our city, all of our lots, we allow duplexes, triplexes, auxiliary dwelling units, up to three per lot, in, in an area where we have previously only allowed single-family residents. When the state mandates that we remove the barriers to that middle housing, we no longer have off-street parking requirements, we no longer have setback requirements, we no longer have owner-occupied requirements, that could unleash a flurry of building activity, and so this would change my priority. If, if a development were to happen on Washington Street, and I know the sewer line running down Washington to, towards Shalanev, I know that is a line from Planning Commission meetings that's going to need work. So, that would get prioritized, taking into account also finances. I, I don't know, and this is something I would have to learn, where do finances to repair city water and streets? Is there any state money made available? From the research I did on House Bill, the answer was no, the state is not making any man, any money available to implement the, the infill building that they would like to have. If financing came available for a, let's say, a park out on Western, and that was a grant money that the staff had worked on and had been received, then of course, I would spend the money on the park before a health and safety issue, if that money was available, and it could only be used for that. So, my prioritizing system of health and safety, infrastructure, and then amenities would be altered by where money becomes available. So, that reversing the question. The first part of the question was, the growing population, how would I prioritize it? Ask that first part again.
With Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities, and public spaces?
I prioritized them, but I also spoke to, how should we address it? We're going to have to address it. We've got sidewalks we have to put in, and neighborhoods that don't currently have, we've got roads that are gonna have traffic patterns that are obviously gonna have to be studied. Again, I don't know where that funding comes from, I, I know parts of it from, again, being briefed, but I don't know all of that. So, I, I can't address how it's going to happen, I just know, as we implement this House Bill, we are going to need plenty of upgrades.
What role do you believe city staff should play in shaping policy or initiatives? Conversely, what role should council members play in day-to-day operations?
My thoughts on that are, having, having worked with city staff quite a bit, I can't, I could never say enough for how professionally organized and how thorough the staff that I have worked with through the years, writing code on everything from chickens to lighting to sign ordinances, to House Bill, you know, middle housing bill. I have worked with staff and I have watched them be professional, professional at a level that I've rarely encountered before. They are extremely thorough, and they are compartmentalized into the, you know, they're engineers, you have planners, you have designers. Their strength is writing the policy that implements the, I need, I need the word, the, the policies and the, ask the first part of the question, because I need the second word.
What role do you believe city staff should play in shaping policy or initiatives?
Initiatives is the word I was finding, I was trying to find, so the initiatives that come, come to them, they will write the minutia, the minutia and the detail of how to implement that, but they don't write that. That initiative comes from, comes from the public, the public that was up here speaking about wanting, wanting a roundabout, let's say, that will turn into an initiative that they will write all of the details about, but they don't make the policy. The council, on the other hand, has an extremely broad picture of what's best for Wenatchee. Whereas they deal with the minutia, the council does not. To an extent, an individual councilman, council member may want to delve into the finances on a roundabout, or the finances on a sewer extension line, but that's not necessarily the council's job in seeing the comprehensive plan of the city, working towards a betterment of Wenatchee. The two of them can meet, and they can share their intricate details, and you can share the broad picture, but I see them, and I see those two roles as that, intricate and
Okay, fifth question is, Wenatchee has a diverse population, including a significant Latino community, how would you ensure that all voices are heard and represented in city
When I, when I first read diverse and Latino, my answer to that was pretty simple. I would always go to the leaders of any community, and be, if it was a Latino community, of course, I would seek out the trusted leaders in that community and make connections with them. Go to their events, go to those events, talk to those leaders, and let them know that their voice is desired, respected, and wanting to be heard. And invite them, make connections with them. But then I got stuck on, well, we're diverse in more than just Latino, we're diverse in age, we're diverse in other cultures, we have a Russian population, I'm Italian, although I'm, I don't have an Italian community here, because I think I'm the only one in Wenatchee. We have, we have orientation, sexual orientation communities. So, how do you get all of those voices to be heard? Make connections with the leaders, their trusted leaders, and then bring, bring them through invitation to our meetings, let them know their voice is desired, respected, and
Thank you. And the last question that you're hearing for the first time, to be, if the city received a one-million-dollar grant for any use, what would you do with it and why?
If the city received a million-dollar grant that I could do anything with, I would spend a portion of it on an event that brought in the public, all of these communities we just talked about, and said, what do you want to do with a million dollars? And I'm sure I'm going to get new structures for quinceañeras, new water parks, I'm going to get a bike lane, I'm going to get a baseball park, I'm probably gonna get a batting cage, I'd like to think I'm gonna get a driving range. I, myself, would not know where to spend the money, because it would be, it would be a selfish expense if I chose it, but if I brought in through invitation to an event, I'm sure a good idea is gonna come from somebody. If I were to spend it, it would just, probably just go down to the homeless people, give them a quality of life for probably only a month, and you'd burn to a million dollars and have a, have a month of feel-good. So, I, I don't think I'd be the one that should be spending that money.
Thank you. Got three minutes?
I have two minutes left.
Anything else you'd like to, let us know?
As I look through all my notes, there's a lot of things I, I didn't get a chance to say, because I kept looking over at the clock and thinking, well, I've gone long-winded on homelessness, and I really don't think they wanna know my views on, on, on the House Bill, because I could, I could go in-depth on middle housing. The frustrating part there is that, having worked for years with Planning Commission on zoning, off-street parking, setbacks, noise ordinances, everything that we've done, and then the middle housing bill can come along and say, none of that's pertinent anymore, you're going to do this, this, and this. And so, part of the frustration of that is what drives me to wanna sit over there, is I feel like we, City of Wenatchee, were taken out of that decision-making process, as every other city in the state was, it was a mandate that came down, and isn't necessarily, I'm not even gonna say necessarily, is not going to solve the low-income housing pro, problem that, that House Bill was initiated for. Cost of construction in Wenatchee is necessarily gonna make any of those ADUs well above three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred thousand dollars. I would, I would like to, I would like to be able to work on that from, from whatever coun, city council position can, I would like to be there working on it. That's all I got.
Thank you, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me have the conversation, I've enjoyed it.
Thanks.
Do I stand here?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Do you want a chair?
No, I'm good standing, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Well, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
We're gonna just go down the line with the questions and go from there, and if there's a little bit of time afterwards, you can talk to us, or you can talk to us a little bit now about, or whatever you wanna do. It's your twenty minutes, so.
Okay, alright, leaving with no rules, perfect.
Okay, question number one. What qualifications, unique skills, or perspectives would you bring to the city council, and what do you hope to achieve serving in this role?
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Well, I'm Catherine Hauser, my name's on the screen, A she/her pronouns, I, I'm assuming that you all read my application since I'm here today, so I will try not to be a broken record, but I'm really excited to be here, it's a huge opportunity, so, thank you, right off the bat. In terms of qualifications, so, I've been working with vulnerable communities in Wenatchee since 2020, I've worked with women and children who have experienced gender-based violence through working with the Northwest Justice Project, worked as a public defender, and now I represent parents who have had their children removed from their homes, based on allegations of abuse and neglect. So, I've worked with some of the most vulnerable communities in Wenatchee. I have learned how to listen to their concerns, bring their voice to the table, and make sure that they feel like they're getting a good outcome. So, professionally, I think that's set me up to bring that here, and bring those voices here. I've also worked with community organizations, I was a treasurer for Wenatchee Pride for a few years, and worked with a number of community organizations, and I think that's given me a lot of great contacts, and a lot of good input from the community, from different Terms of my perspective and what I'll bring to the council, I, I'm young and I have a lot of energy and time, so, I think that's a huge plus. I, from, you know, the millennial generation, have a lot of really exciting ideas that I think I could bring to the council and help implement, and really support the work that you guys are already doing. I also think that as a member of the LGBTQ community, I bring representation that the council doesn't have, and that community isn't historically represented in these kinds of spaces in Wenatchee, which is important to recognize. And what I hope to achieve is bringing those diverse voices to the table, like I said, ensuring that community members feel engaged, feel heard, and again, just continue the positive change that the council is already doing. I don't need to reinvent the wheel, I just need to grease it up a little bit.
Okay, Catherine, how would you address homelessness in Wenatchee? How would you engage with your other city council members if you disagreed on this approach?
Well, I'm sure we're all going to agree, right? This is actually one of the major issues that brought me here today. I think it's a hot-button issue that everyone has ideas and opinions on, and thinking that we would all agree is like pulling the wool over our eyes. But, it's important to people who are currently unhoused and other members in our community who are housed and want to help. So, I approached this issue with kind of two lanes, preventing and revading, and I think the solutions are entwined, so, ensuring that people do not lose their housing by increasing drug and alcohol treatment, by increasing re-entry programs for folks who are leaving the jail here, for SkillSource, for increasing employment services so that people can keep their jobs and not lose their housing. I also watched the presentation of the comprehensive plan that was presented to the city last week, and they took the words right out of my mouth, just increasing housing, period. Wenatchee is growing at an extensive rate, and we don't have enough housing to house everyone that's moving here, or that's even already here, and so, if we can increase the number of low-income housing, of subsidized housing, of middle housing, then we can help meet the need, help get folks off the streets, and help keep them in their homes. In terms of working with other council members, I live and work by the phrase, "approach with curiosity and not judgment." We all bring different professional and lived experience to this position for a reason, and we're all here for the same reason, it's to help our community, to make sure our community is safe and healthy and thriving. So, again, we will all come with different perspectives, and I recognize that I will not always be right, and that I will sometimes be wrong, even though sometimes it's hard for a lawyer to admit, but I've come to that realization, so just ensuring that we can come to a consensus is all that we can do.
Alright, next question, with Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities, and public spaces? How would you prioritize competing needs?
Well, now I am a broken record, because you guys just heard the comprehensive work plan, and those guys are the experts, and presented so much valuable information, not only about how Wenatchee is growing and the real demographics of that, but what the solutions are. And so, like I said, I don't need to reinvent the wheel, I'm not a housing expert, I do not claim to be, I'm not an infrastructure expert, what I am expert at is saying, I don't know what the answer is, let's go figure that out, and so, listening to people who the city relies on, like those consultants, like community members, to come in and tell us what they think the city needs. And then they leave those decisions in our hands to make, ensuring that we have all of the information we need to make a decision, but that comprehensive plan, I think, really laid out nicely how Wenatchee's growing and how we can meet those needs. So, listening to experts, that's number one, and also, reaching out to. And also reaching out to other cities who have seen the same kind of growth. The consultants mentioned Yakima, which I think is a great example. The tri-cities, you know, communities that are growing, continuously growing, but are already bigger than Wenatchee. How have they met their city's needs? How have they met their community's needs? What do they wish they might have done differently that we could avoid? And then the second part of that is community engagement. And I'll talk about that a little bit later, but I think that's crucial. Not everyone wants to come to a city council meeting on a Thursday, even though some people do. But ensuring that we have diverse avenues of engaging the community. I loved the idea of putting a survey in the public utility bill. I think that is a great way to reach out to people who maybe wouldn't either think their voice is necessary or think to share it. But a utility bill is something everything that everyone gets, ensuring it's translated into languages that are common in our community. I mean, Spanish, obviously, but that's not the only language that we have spoken here in Wenatchee. So that leads me to the competing needs. And Mayor Mike, you said what I always tell my clients. It's a good outcome if everyone leaves unhappy. You know, if everyone's like, all right, well, I didn't get everything I wanted, but I got some. And that's just the realistic nature of making decisions, making hard decisions, is that some needs are going to be greater than others. And as long as we are listening to the community and ensuring that no voice is louder than someone else's, we will figure out what the community needs, what's most important for the community's health, safety, and growth. And, you know, we might make some people unhappy, and that's okay. It's a difficult part of this position, but it's a necessary part, so.
All right. What role do you believe city staff would play in shaping policy or initiatives? Conversely, what role should city council members play in day-to-day operations?
Yeah, this this was an interesting question because I I don't know the answer to that. The city staff have been here much longer than any of us. And so they are intimately familiar with how these processes work. They are also community members whose voices should be heard, just like everyone else's. Just because they're on the city's payroll doesn't mean they don't get to have a say in what the council does. And so I think building trust is a huge asset to the council members and the city staff's relationship so that if a staff member has an idea, come pitch it. If they have feedback, come give it. But that method of communication isn't going to be there without trust. And ensuring that if they need help, come ask for it. And, you know, in terms of thinking about how city council members are engaging on the day-to-day operations of the city staff, again, I don't know what's the norm right now. I don't know how much you all do engage or don't engage, whether it's a totally hands-off. You all know what you're doing to keep getting it done. Or if it's, again, already a method of communication that's been built. But I think I'm I'm a huge advocate of teamwork and delegation and love to delegate. And I also love to be delegated too, because no one can do everything. So as long as staff members know that they can ask for help and that we can ask them for help or input as need be, I think that's a great working relationship. The only other part I want to mention is that people in positions of power can quickly learn to abuse that power. And so I think as a city council member, I would be very, very cautious about what decisions I am making and how those impact city staff. And I just ensure that their voices and their experience as a city staff member are put to the forefront.
Okay. Wenatchee has a diverse population, including a significant Latino community. How would you ensure that all voices are heard and represented in city decisions?
It's also a very relevant question, given what the Wenatchee world has reported on this week, given what our communities are seeing. And in my experience talking with clients and friends and community members, there's a lot of fear right now about engaging in local government, engaging in local politics. I don't think coming into a local government feels safe to some people at the moment. And so set this with city staff members, and I'll say it again. I think building trust, ensuring that the Latino community knows that they are safe, that the city supports them, that this is a home that they can call home, whether it's someone who has literally built this community from the ground up or whether they just moved here. Ensuring that people know that we're we're here for them and their voices are valued. So just right off the bat, you have to build trust in order for someone to actually give you their viewpoint, to give you their opinion. And I think the city has a lot of opportunity in terms of reaching out to more diverse communities, reaching out to the Latino community, ensuring that community or that city council meetings have an interpreter or have closed captions with Spanish so that people can watch from home if they don't want to come in person but still understand what's going on, have, you know, interpreters here if someone wants to come give a public comment in Spanish to ensure that we can communicate. You know, there are a lot of ideas and really cool technology we can tap into to ensure that language is the least thing that we're concerned about. So that's just one way to engage voices. But there's already a lot of community organizations doing really cool work. Cafe, Northwest Immigrants Rights Project, Team Natural Laysa, that are engaged in the community, know what the pulse is on certain issues, and ensuring that they are brought to the table, that they are disseminating surveys or whatever. Can just help bring more voices in from the Latino community. All right, five minutes left for the surprise question. Is that going to be enough?
And I've got that here, yeah.
Oh, you do? Oh, lucky you.
Well, it may not be enough, but here we go. If the city received a one-million-dollar grant for any use, what would you do with it and why?
Oh, wow. That's a fun question for you guys to ask. Well, I think just right off the bat, kind of take a a look back and see what some of the concerns from community members have been. You know, I'm sure, well, actually, no, I I know because I've been one of the people who comes to the city council and asks for money. So people come and ask for money all the time. And see, are there trends? Is it, you know, investing in middle housing? Is it helping out common ground? Is it doing small grants for community projects? You know, looking back and seeing what ideas have already been brought. You know, is there anything that's been burning a hole in our pockets for the past couple of years that this could really help? And opening it up to public comment. You know, we are only, one, two, three, four, five, eight people. There's a lot more people in Wenatchee than us. And again, I think the main role of city council is to listen and ensure that we are making decisions that represent our community values and meet our community needs. And so opening up public comment to, hey, what do we think this could be most useful for? And I have a feeling that people would come in droves with ideas. And then, you know, the hard decisions have to be made. And I think that's kind of a lawyerly answer. It depends. What would we do with a million bucks? It depends. But I think it truly does. It depends on what the community needs. It depends on the city's budget and if there are gaps that need to be filled. But ultimately, that's not my decision. It's the councils and Wenatchee as a whole, so.
Anything else you want to tell us for your three minutes? It's not public comment, three minutes. This is your time.
Well, yeah, I have a couple. I have the feedback. I'm just kidding. No, again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. This is such an honor to be in front of you today. And I am really excited to see the direction that the council goes in, whether I'm a part of it or not. Just sitting in that room with everyone who gets to go after me, who I'm going to go give all the answers to, is just reinforcing how beautiful and vibrant of a community this is. Although we only talked about Stormwater tonight, it wasn't that exciting. But it just, you know, hearing you talk about the manager, you know, that's, we have really good people here. And it's an honor to be a part of this community and to be here, so.
Thank you for, thank you very much for participating. We're going to take a five- or ten-minute break for the next, uh, person.
Yeah, he did tell me that he has reached out to a bunch of people.
I might adjust this before we start. Is that okay?
Thanks for being patient. As a reminder, it's twenty minutes, and we'll go through the questions. And a little time, you can say a couple of words now if you want to, or wait till the end. And got extra time, you can talk then about other things, whatever you decide to do.
Well, first of all, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to be here. And I hope that tonight I am able not only to convey the words that I have in my mind, but that you will see through my heart and my passion for this work.
Okay. First question. What qualifications, unique skills, or perspectives would you bring to the city council? And what do you hope to achieve serving in this role?
Okay, well, I bring a combination of vast leadership experiences, problem-solving, collaboration, and really, I I feel that I have strong communication skills. I take pride in all the work that I have done throughout my life. At a very young age, I was the daughter of migrant farm workers, worked in our cherry orchard. So in this very valley, I, my hands have been put to work. So I understand the great work that our community accomplishes season after season. I've also worked in packing sheds as a young teenager, like most others. And I've also worked in the retail market. So I've worked in jewelry sales and cellphone sales. So I understand many different jobs, and those have all really brought experiences and skills that I can now share with you guys. In the last sixteen years, I have been working in education, first as a classroom teacher, then as an administrator. And in my experience, both as an assistant principal at the elementary and secondary, I've had lots of great opportunities to collaborate with our stakeholders, including community members when addressing the needs of a teenager who's struggling with drug addiction, working with and partnering with our parents, working with his child, and other resources within our community. I also have a lot of experiences as a director. I worked as a director for state and federal programs. So at Eastmont School District, I would apply for grants. I would look for different grants across our state and federal programs and ensure that and ensure that when working with our nine different schools, I was not only complying with our fiscal responsibilities, but also ensuring that the program goals and objectives were met at each site. I've also worked closely with our leadership team, executive team, HR team, accounting, and I understand the financial side of things. And I believe in making sure that we maintain a fiscally healthy community. So I understand that end as well. And one thing that I haven't mentioned is I am a first generation Latina college graduate. I'm multilingual and multicultural, and I think that that's an asset that I bring to the table as not only, I know you guys have a diverse panel already, but I would be one of the first females in your panel that is Latina. And what I hope to accomplish is really a more unified and connected community. I hope to bring all of the resources that I have worked so hard and connections within our community and bring those to the table when we continue to partner with outside resources and entities to ensure that our constituents have the best services and that they truly feel like they belong and are heard here in our valley. Thank you.
All right, Myra. How would you address homelessness in Wenatchee? How would you engage with your other city council members if you disagreed on this approach?
Okay, well homelessness, I truly believe, is a multifaceted challenge. In my work with youth ministry, we get to visit our homeless population very often. I know many of them by name and I know a lot of their stories. And I truly understand that this is a community effort. We have to continue partnering. I applaud the great work that you guys are already doing, but we have to continue partnering with outside agencies, not only to address their basic needs like eating and shelter, but also their social emotional traumas and drug addictions. Oftentimes, when I encounter many of these individuals, they share their history. And it's pretty evident that the trauma endured at a younger age is really attributing to their fact that they can't truly be self-sufficient and get up on their feet. So I think we have to continue leaning on the resources within our community, Catholic charities, CVCH and Confluence Health, making sure that we address not only their social emotional, their drug and alcohol needs, but also their physical needs. When was it the last time that they saw a dentist? I know many of our homeless population are missing a lot of teeth, but they don't know where to go or can't have some, they don't know that there's somewhere where they can get those basic needs met. So again, I think it's a multifaceted approach that we have to address as a community. And what would I do if one of the council members does not agree with my approach? I think that I, I would be open to listening. I think that all of our perspectives have changed based on our encounters with other people. And I've read many books on conflict resolution and critical conversations. And in administration, we had lots of critical conversations. So I opened the door to that. I seek to understand before I make a decision. So I would just open the door to that and understanding that in the end, we're gonna make the decision that is best for our community. And regardless of what my opinion is, we have to work together. Thank you.
All right, next question. With Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities, and public spaces? How would you prioritize competing needs?
Well, I was really excited to read the newspaper and see your comprehensive plan because this aligns specifically to this question. And I am all about data and numbers. If we continue to invest our time in looking at our five-year, 10-year, 20-year trends, then we can be better prepared for tomorrow, today. And I think we accomplish that by leaning on our city staff, leaning on those outside agencies that are doing that research, and making sure that we look ahead and say, okay, these are the funding resources that we currently have. This is what's allocated to each one of these projects. Which project needs to be prioritized? We know that housing is a big challenge right now. We know that as a valley, we don't have a lot of space to grow. We heard from two people today that said, you know, it continues to grow. The speed limits are not change, the speed limits are the same, but people are not adapting. So I think that we continue to look at what is the people, what is the people's voice saying? What are our priorities? And we set aside the things that we don't have the funds to accomplish now. That doesn't mean it's not important work, it's just work that is not going to be done at this moment. I also have a lot of experience working with grants at the state and federal level. So I love hearing when some of your staff members come up and share, we are tapping into this grant and we have matching funds, and that's the right conversation to have. It's never, we can't do it, it's how can we do it? Thank you.
Okay, number four. What role do you believe city staff would play in shaping policies or initiatives? Conversely, what role should council members play in day-to-day operations?
Okay, and know that, my caveat, I am in the learning process. So thank you for your patience as I continue to grow to better understand. But I think the city staff's role is really critical. They are looking at the data, they are looking at the resources, they are looking at our current projects. And they are the ones that we lean on as city council members to ensure that we understand what is happening in our community. I think our role is not to micromanage the amazing work they're doing, but our role is to truly understand. So going through, I know all of you guys go through these packets and you read through all this information. I think that that's what our role is, is we trust them, they're doing the great work, and we ask clarifying questions when we don't understand what's happening in our community. Our role is really to continue looking at our projects, looking at your amazing comprehensive plan. How are our future projects aligning and being embedded into our current goals? Not only do we look at projects, we look at our budgets. Budgets are critical for us. We have to continue looking at what funds do we currently have in our expenditures, and also making sure that we are projecting future expenditures that can occur and looking at our reserve. Do we have money that we can set aside to help us in the future? And then the second part to this, you asked for our role. I think the most important role that we hold is advocacy. We advocate for the voices in our community and we listen to their opinions so that we make decisions that are really representing who we're here for to serve. Thank you.
Okay. Fifth question is, Wenatchee has a diverse population, including a significant Latino community. How would you ensure that all voices are heard and represented in city decisions?
I'm really excited to see the things that you guys are already doing to open the door to our Latino population. But I am fully aware of the challenges. Working in education, I was the Director of Parent Engagement, so I would create events for our families every month. So I know that this is a big challenge for all of us. But I think the first thing we start with is breaking down the linguistic barrier. We have a lot of families that are coming from Ukraine. We have families from Latin America. We have families from all over the world. So simple things like your great YouTube videos and making sure that we can put captions when we have these city hall meetings, that the captions can be changed to multiple languages. That's one quick step that we can accomplish. But also partnering with our local community. I did a lot of work with local radio stations, so going to our local radio stations and talking to our people, Latino people, about what's going on in their city. If we're going to hold a forum or a city hall meeting, that we talk to them in advance in a place that is familiar to them, so that they feel more welcome to come to the table. I also think that we have to continue looking for ways to break down their social emotional barriers, because oftentimes, it can be overwhelming to step into city hall. So going to events where they're already gathering. It might be local schools as they hold family events. It might also be churches. I know in my personal church, we have over 600 people that show up for one mass. So that's a great opportunity for us to reach out and share what's currently happening and really get them to voice their concerns. So I think overall, in order for us to really get our Latino population at the table, we have to make sure that we go to them instead of expecting them to come to us. Thank you.
Okay, and now the bonus question.
I love it, go for it.
If the city received a $1 million grant for any use, what would you do with it and why?
Okay, before I would do anything with the money, before we would touch the money, we would read through any other strings that are attached to it. I know that I worked really closely with our budgets and with grants at Eastmont School District. So I would read thoroughly through all those components to make sure that whatever we decide to spend this money on, we can actually truly ensure that, whether it's federal funds or state funds, that we can check all the boxes, right? And if that funding was granted, my heart and soul goes out to our homeless population. So I would continue to invest that money in seeking new ways to get some of our population that is at most disadvantage to a place where they could be healthier. Working as a Title I Director for McKinney-Vento, I would see a lot of families that were on the verge of losing their home. So I also know the other side of the coin. And I've seen families that are living doubled up in garage spaces and cars and in parks. So I think that maybe we could use those funds to help bridge that gap. Schools do a great job, but there's always things that the schools cannot do. I've worked with a lot of community, non-for-profits, and oftentimes, when that family was on the verge of losing their house, there was no one to bridge that gap and pay for that hotel. So while the family got back up on their feet. So I would invest that money in housing projects or to support our homeless population.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How much time's left?
Six minutes!
Okay, you can, you can, uh, tell us anything else you want?
Well, you guys did not ask me why. I was hoping the bonus question would be why, so I wanna share my why. Through the last weeks and months, I've been asked by many people, why, Myra? Why do you wanna do this? Right? And all of my responses have really led to one thing: servant leadership. At a very young age, I just yearned for helping others. And when I was at Eastmont School District, that is what I advocated for. I had a parent council and we would sit down every month and we would talk about the challenges at our nine schools. And I would listen to them. And I would not only listen to them with empathy, but I would try to better understand what they wanted for their children. And when I understood what they wanted for their children, I would then go to my executive team, to my administrators, and say, here's the challenge. How do we solve it together? And then we would put boots on the ground and bring outside resources in so that these families felt like they were not only listened to, they were valued and belonged, but that we were truly going to do the work that we said we were there to do. So my why is to serve this community. I take pride in being a part of Wenatchee Valley. I'm raising my children here because I love it here. Having my administrative degree, I could go anywhere and get a job. I mean, you guys just have to look at state hirings and I could be anywhere. But I choose to be here and I choose to serve here because this is where I was raised and I wanna just give back to our community.
Thank you so, so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. It's hard to sometime reach out and it's impressive that everybody comes and is reaching out and the quality that we, obviously, everybody knows it's gonna be the hardest decision for us probably in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm starving.
Which mic? Oh, it's right there.
Thank you, thank you for being here, Richard. As you're, we got 20 minutes and the clock's over here, so you know. And you can start off with saying a few things. You wait till the end and make sure there's enough time to go through all the questions, otherwise, whatever you want, then we'll start off the questions here.
Well, it's not gonna take, it's not gonna take 20 minutes, I can assure you. I wanna thank the council for the opportunity tonight to be here as a candidate to fill the unexpired term of Keith Hufiker. I've known Keith for many years and I know him to be a person who has truly made a difference in this community. Now, should I, should I go ahead and start with the questions?
We'll just, we'll just go here and we'll just go down the row and here we go.
Okay, question number one. What qualifications, unique skills, or perspectives would you bring to the city council? And what do you hope to achieve serving in this role?
Okay. By the way, I'm, I'm reading this because I'm not a good off-the-cuff speaker. I have a strong background in public sector finance, including my career with the Internal Revenue Service and later with King County Judicial Administration, the Finance Section, from which I retired in 2018. Very recently, I decided to seek certifications which would allow me to confidently open my own freelance bookkeeping service. From all of this, I bring a unique perspective on fiscal responsibility and effective budget management. I'm adept at analyzing complex financial data, ensuring compliance with regulations, and finding practical solutions to financial challenges. My skills in reconciling accounts, producing clear and accurate financial reports, and identifying cost-saving opportunities align well with the needs of a city council overseeing public resources. In serving on the city council, my goal would be to ensure prudent use of taxpayer funds and to be an advocate for initiatives that improve the quality of life in our community.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard. How would you address homelessness in Wenatchee? How would you engage with your other city council members if you disagreed on this approach?
To address homelessness in Wenatchee, I'd focus on expanding access to shelters and supportive housing where possible, investing in mental health and addiction treatment, reducing homelessness through rental assistance and job training, and engaging directly with affected individuals and community partners. Collaboration with nonprofits and government agencies would be a key to a coordinated response. If I disagree with other city council members, I would encourage open dialogue, present solutions based on sound data, and seek common ground to ensure the policies reflect the community's needs and interest.
Question number three. With Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities, and public spaces? How would you prioritize competing needs?
Yes, okay. Wenatchee's transportation challenges stem from its geography, its population growth, and regional hub status. Key issues include, as far as the geographic limits, the Columbia River and surrounding hills create bottlenecks on key routes like the George Sellar Bridge. Traffic congestion, increasing vehicles use strains arterials like the North Wenatchee Avenue. Who hasn't experienced that? Transit gaps, linked transit, needs expanded routes and frequency to serve residents better. Pedestrian safety, limited crossings and pathways restrict non-vehicle mobility. And winter hazards, we all know about that. Maintenance and safety are big issues there. Solutions should focus on transit improvements, road upgrades, and safer pedestrian infrastructure.
Okay, what role do you believe city staff should play in shaping policy or initiatives? Conversely, what role should council members play in the day-to-day operations?
City staff and council members City staff and council members should have separate but complementary roles in the governance of the city. And maintaining clarity in these roles is crucial to effective and efficient operations. Staff handle day-to-day operations, implement council policies and provide technical expertise. Expertise being, in the quotes, they really do. They ensure the city services run smoothly and offer informed recommendations to help council members make sound decisions. While not decision-makers, staff offer professional advice, draft policy proposals and assess feasibility to support the council. Council members are elected to set the vision and priorities for the city. They shape policies and initiatives based on community needs and feedback. As representatives of the public, council members act as a voice for constituents and engage with the community to understand their concerns. Council members should not, should not be involved in day-to-day operations of the city. However, a strong collaborative relationship does exist and should between staff and council. In short, council members set the direction and staff handle the implementation.
Question number five. Wenatchee has a diverse population, including a significant Latino community. How would you ensure that all voices are heard and represented in city decisions?
To make sure everyone in Wenatchee feels heard, I'd focus on a few key things. First, let's acknowledge that city information is already available in both English and Spanish. I would support platforms like local Spanish language radio and social media to reach more people. Next, I'd sponsor town halls held in accessible, accessible places and times, working closely with Latino leaders and community groups to encourage participation. I'd also support a push to get more Latino representation on city boards and commissions. Finally, I'd set a clear goal for inclusiveness and shared regular updates on how we're doing. It's all about building trust and creating a city where everyone feels they belong and have a voice.
Thank you. And now the bonus question.
Bonus. That's what you want to call it?
Do you have a name for it?
It's, it's going to throw me.
Okay.
But anyway, go ahead.
There we go. If the city received a $1 million grant for any use, what would you do with it and why?
A million dollar grant. Wow. I, I think I would I, I think I would focus on the, the transportation issue. I don't know exactly, you know, in details what that would mean, but we clearly have a problem in that area.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You got a little time if you want to talk about anything else on your mind or?
What else on my mind is my, is my right hip is going to be replaced in two weeks. That's on my mind all the time. I ordered, I ordered one from Amazon and should be here by the third. No, other than that, I, I don't.
We, we really appreciate you taking the initiative to go through the process.
Thank you.
It means a lot that a tremendous amount, we got, I think, 12 or 13 applicants and it's incredible that we got that much engagement, so.
And I appreciate the opportunity to be here and, you know, answer those questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Which way should I?
I would say so.
Oh, nice.
Long day at work.
Well, the flight back was cool because it, it wasn't full, so you could like lay in the whole aisle.
Hi Juan.
Hi, how are you? You caught me off guard. I was waiting for another 10, 15 minutes. I was hoping, but here we are.
Lucky you. So the clock's over there for the 20 minutes, just so you know. And that gives you the time. You can talk a little bit ahead of time or we can just get right to the questions. And if you have a few minutes afterwards, you can talk afterwards about whatever you'd like to do.
Oh, I think we get right to the question.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get it done.
All right. What qualifications, unique skills or perspectives would you bring to the city council? And what do you hope to achieve serving in this role?
Well, you know, actually, first of all, I want to thank you guys for putting me on the final list. That is incredible. I never thought I would be here in front of you, but yeah. And I will apologize ahead of hand because, ahead of time, because I might bring up things, ideas that you guys might have explored before. And I was at your meeting last time and you're doing a great job. Yeah, I'm not trying to patronize you, but I went through the presentation. It was incredible. And, and getting to why I think, you know, I, I want to do this and why do you think I'm qualified? I, you know, I'm a product of this community and I think I've been groomed to be here, to be a public servant, honestly. You know, I came to Wenatchee at the end of 93, you know, as a young person and ready to conquer the world and, you know, started at Eastmont High School. Mr. Boone, he was the principal there and gave me a chance. I was a 20-year-old and he gave me a chance to graduate there. I needed three credits to graduate and he gave me the chance. So I feel that I've had key people in my life that have been there at key moments that helped me, that catapulted me to the next, you know, adventure, to the next level. And that was wonderful. You know, when I did that, I went to work for the Head Start program. I thought I was contributing to that program and then I feel guilty that I, that I was getting paid to learn how to, you know, child development, how to be a parent, how to work with low-income families, you know, being aware of all the needs that our community has. And it was incredible, the learning, you know, I got my child development associates during that. It, it was incredible. It helped me so much to understand my own kids. And I was able to raise them in, in maybe a better way than I would have done before the Head Start program. And one of my kids was product of that program. And I'm so proud to say that, you know, every dollar they invest in that program, it pays off at the end. I think the, the number, it's, you get 700% return on your investment in that program. I still, it's a great program. After that, I was fortunate enough to work, be a part of the Board of Directors at Columbia Valley Community Health. Great group of professionals, you know, doctors, Dr. Stroming, Nick Covey was there, Lowly Larson, great people in the community with great insight, you know, Robert Junior, Robert Scott Junior, an attorney. And I learned so much. And my part of that Board of Directors was to bring, to be the voice of the underserved. Because at that time, I was part of that group, of that community, you know, and I'm still part of that community. I grew up, I went, you know, I was in the trenches, I was surviving, I was, you know, everything that I see our families go through right now, I was there, I experienced it, I was part of it. And like I said, thankfully, to some key people in my life, community members, they were there at the exact moment. It was like they were placed there to give me advice, to give you an opportunity, to open a door so I could step through and go to the next level. So being a member of the Board of Directors, it was incredible because I, you know, when I was, I was looking at your strategic planning the other day and I was like, oh, I'm reliving those days. Because yeah, when we started out, we started out with a $12 million budget. It was still La Clinica Chiquita because it was very small, very tiny. We moved into a different building and at that point, we started strategizing and one of the things, you know, the clinic wanted to get was Jako accredited. It was a, it's a big deal in medical institutions and the clinic wasn't accredited. So we were able to accomplish that. We were able to move into Shalan Manson, buy property over there, develop it and have clinics and access to the families up north. And we also had, you know, we saw our budget increase from 12 million to $30 million. You know, we added a 15,000 square foot building and we're able to learn about budgeting, about, you know, leadership, contributing, making a place better and seeing the growth. When we added dental to the clinic, it was incredible, you know. And I think we invented the, now that you get a text, you know, from your doctor saying you have an appointment on such and such day, we had such an issue, people missing appointments, that we, I think we invented, hey, send them a text, give them a call, remind them. So it was incredible to be there. But I think the most important job for me in that place was to represent the part of the community where I was living, where I was growing up and the struggles that I, you know, that I, that I was going through. And I knew a lot of people in the community were going through. And I know that still, that part of the community is still going through those same struggles, you know. So I think that was the best part of being there. Lobbying in Washington DC was great. It was fun. I had, you know, I learned a lot, met a great people. But the most important job, I think, it was that. So I think I was groomed to be a public servant, you know, by this community. You know, the community helped me raise my kids. There's people here that know that and it's incredible. And I think that, you know, every step of the way, not a perfect human being by any means, but I think I was groomed to be a public servant, you know. And I think I have the capacity, the, the training, the, the experience and hopefully the maturity to do such a job.
Okay, Juan. How would you address homelessness in Wenatchee? How would you engage with other city council members if you disagreed on this approach?
Yeah, you know, this, actually, I've read some things that, you know, homeless, it's, it's a thing that we inherit from, from other places, right? So our, our place is unique because the city per se didn't cause that issue minimal, but it wasn't caused by the city, by the environment and the city dynamics, you know. Wenatchee is a great place to live and some people want to be here and they make their way here. But now that landed on our lap and we have to deal with it. And maybe with growth comes certain pains that we have to deal with. And homeless is going to be one of those. We know that that's, you know, studies have shown that that's a result of poverty, unemployment, mental health, drug addiction, and, you know, we have to deal with that. And to deal with that, we have to do, be compassionate about it and have strategic ideas and things in place to deal with those things. I read case studies, like, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with, you know, The Housing First in Salt Lake City, Utah. And how tremendous was their, their success? They reduced it by 90% and maybe I'm preaching to the choir, but you know, they reduced homelessness by 90%. When they compare the cost of housing somebody opposed to having somebody out on the streets, getting arrested, one day in jail costs, you know, like 400 bucks. A trip to the emergency room, you know, doctor bills and, you know, all those things cost a lot more money than housing somebody for a year, which they found out it was $37,000 a year to house, you know, one person. A lot more affordable than leaving them out on the street to fend for themselves. And then the city will still afford that bill. You know, now we have to get creative and be very careful. There is people out there that say, oh, if you start treating them right, more people are going to come, right? But there is things we cannot ignore what, you know, we have to look at the immediate needs and then focus on the root causes of these things, you know. And if we get busy on creating more jobs, making sure the city create, we create more jobs, you know, housing affordability, it's incredible the impact that we're going to do. And maybe housing affordability will mean zoning the community with, well, and there is a plethora of ideas of, you know, how you collect more taxes, how you force people to live in residential areas and keep them there, you know, and, and keep residential areas or zoning areas where we don't do it for investment opportunities, we do it for living opportunities. There is people that have the right to invest and make money on things like that. But when you look for places, you have a place and you buy a second place just to, as an investment, but you go and buy it in the neighborhood and you make it great and all this, and all of a sudden, you know, people cannot afford a home there because of that. So we have to look at those. Those are just ideas that we can look at to reduce the cost of living and make sure that, that affordability stays, you know, constant and people can afford a place to live. And I'm sure other people will still be able to afford a place to invest in, right? And creating more jobs, you know, that's something that we can do. You know, back in 97, Microsoft came into town and partnered with Wenatchee Valley College and brought in their, you know, system and network engineer program to the tech department at Wenatchee Valley College, which I'm a product of. You know, that was one of the technology, technological revolutions that happened. Well, thankfully, we're right out entering another tech revolution with AI and all the opportunities and all the money that is being poured into it. And we see that across the bridge, Microsoft is investing $1 million to build a data center, 1.8 billion, I have to say, $1 billion. And Quincy, $1.8 billion to, for a data center. That's great. Now we can show Microsoft that we can develop the workforce, train our, our children, train our students and create those super smart people to convince Microsoft that Wenatchee is a great place to have a backup to their AI production, their software, their chat GPT, you know, their Internet Explorer here in Wenatchee and we have the workforce. So those are ways that we can address, you know, those, those issues. Creating opportunities and taking care of people, being compassionate about it. And if there is, you know, in a group, there always be people that will think different, right? Will have different ideas, but I always think to be open and listen to everybody. Make sure that everybody feels heard and they can give their input. You know, and at the end, we have to be able to look at the data, look at, you know, case studies, bring up evidence-driven decisions and make sure everybody is included.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Valia. With Wenatchee's growing population, how should the city address infrastructure needs, including roads, utilities and public spaces? How would you prioritize competing needs?
Well, I kind of want to cheat on this one because I was at your meeting, at your last meeting and I saw your strategic planning and all the wonderful things that are going to happen here, so. But it is incredible to see that and I praise you guys for it. You know, that's exactly what we need. But in, whether we want it or not, it is great to have the small-town vibe and, you know, beautiful Wenatchee and hey, weird enough and we want to keep it this way. You know, it's not going to happen. It's going to grow, like, you know, your, your strategic planning shows that we're going to grow. And for competing ideas, well, you know, we're public servants, right? If it was my money, I will do whatever I want with it. But it's not mine. It's the community money and we are just the voice of the community. After we look at everything, we get advice, we get, you know, data and we look at all the projections that we can think of, we need to go to the public, you know, and ask, survey and ask again and make sure we count everybody and we get opinions from everybody. Be strategic about it and follow that route. What is it that the community wants? What is it that the community is expressing that they need? So that will be my approach. Thanks.
Just a reminder that clock's there, so we got a couple, just so you know.
All right.
Thank you.
What role do you believe city staff would play in shaping policies or initiatives? Conversely, what role should city council members play in day-to-day operations?
Well, you know, city staff, they're essential people because they're the experts. They're out on the field, they're the, in charge of the day-to-day operations. They know exactly what's going on. They know exactly where that pipe burst. They know exactly what to do with it. They know exactly who to call and they'll take care of the day-to-day operations, you know. They're essential and we have to trust them with their opinions and their expertise to guide us on our policymaking. And we are the voice of the community. We are here to, you know, for governance, you know. And once we come up with an idea with their support, we put it back on their hands and we trust that they will do the best job that they can, as we saw in that presentation of fixing that. do the best job that they can, as we saw in that presentation of fixing that, that tragedy over there.
Okay. Question number five. Wenatchee has a diverse population, including a significant Latino community. How would you ensure that all voices are heard and represented in city decisions?
Yeah, that, that is something, that is an incredible thing because, you know, being a Latino myself, you know, and like I said before, growing, you know, in, in that neighborhood and those communities and the struggle and, and I'm not saying a lot of people don't struggle. I'm, I'm just giving my, my, you know, life story here, right? But we are a different culture, you know, and we don't help but to behave differently. And different is not necessarily bad, but when we want input from our community, we have to be very get to them and make sure that we participate. Because we don't, you know, we don't take those things for, ah, yeah, I have to go vote. Oh, yeah, I have, they sent the survey. I wanna send it back. We don't, we don't behave like that. So we have to meet them on their turf, on their terms. If there is a soccer game, we go and meet him there. If there is a, a meeting, you know, a gathering, we go and meet him there. We bring things to them to get their voice, their input and participation. You know, it is unfortunate. We go around and there are still families that don't speak English. They're monolingual. Their kids translate for them. But we want the input from the person, you know, that is gonna voice their opinion. So we have to be, we have to do outreach. We have to go and, hey, hey, we need to get this done. This is important. We go and, you know, if, if we have to canvass, we have to go and knock on doors. We have to, you know, who's having a, you know, a meeting this evening? There is groups in the community that attract a lot of people, a lot of the Hispanic population. Is to go there with them, meet with them and get their opinion and their voice. Because they do have great ideas and great opinions. We just have to get it out of there, out of them.
Okay, and the last question. If the city received a one million dollar grant for any use, what would you do with it and why?
Oh, you know what? Like I said before, you know, I will grab it and run with it and say, hey, we need to do a study on how we're gonna approach Microsoft. How we're gonna get their business? How am I gonna convince those guys that they need to bring their operations here? And how am I gonna bring them to start a program at Wenatchi Valley College or start it even earlier? You know, set tracks in high school and set these kids, set them up for success. You start them early on that track and the new era, the new technology revolution is AI. You know, right now in Texas, we all heard them, they're putting in their five hundred billion dollars for, for AI facilities. You know, one billion dollars across the bridge, one point eight billion dollars in Quincy. I say we get some chunk of that pocket change and bring it to Wenatchee and make it so appealing to them that, hey, we're gonna grow the workforce here. We're gonna prepare and they'll be skilled employees. They will do exactly what you tell them because that, that was me and back in ninety seven, they created those facilities. I was there, you know, in a, in two years, my salary went up a hundred and one, a hundred and twenty-five percent. Just because they did that. Two years after that, because I opened my eye, wow, this is a great opportunity. You know, I was the first person that went through that program. And the, the guys, the, my peers that went through that program, I can visit with them. I still see them how we all grew and we all got better and we got better jobs and better income. Two years after that, my salary doubled again. You know, it is those opportunities that we cannot miss. If I had that money, I will do the, the research. I will get, you know, the, the experts in the area and the city and say, hey, we need to bring, we need to bring that guy over here. We need to show them that Wenatchee can be, and with everything that is going on around the world, don't you think Bill Gates is not thinking, what if there is a natural disaster here? Just like they never thought it could happen in LA, it happened. What if it happens on the coast? Well, not that, you know, we're hoping for anything like that, but in technology, we always have a backup. And that backup, if we can have facilities here that they can trust us, that we can upkeep, we can do the job and we can ma- maintain it and say, hey, you know what, if anything goes down, if the, and we have everything, we have cheap electricity, we have super fast fiber optics. And we, and I just heard the other day, we have one million square feet of available building space somewhere here. So we have what it takes to get that off the ground today. So we need to do that. That's what I will do if I had that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Got twenty seconds if there's anything else.
Oh, twenty seconds. Can I do a dance or something? Now I can breathe. I've been holding my breath forever. Yeah, so, so thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. I don't like it when it's tough and hard and, but boy, aren't we thankful for everybody that has been here going through this. Um, well, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your honor, I will move to, move to executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office, RCW four two point three zero point one one zero one H.
Second. For a time period, for a time period not to exceed?
For a time period not to exceed thirty minutes?
An action expected to be taken?
And what?
An action to be expected?
Okay. For a time period not to exceed thirty minutes, action is expected to be taken following the executive session. Thank you.
Second. Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Quivvis. To meet an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of candidate for appointment to elective office, RCW forty two point three zero point one one zero one H. For a time period not to exceed thirty minutes, action expect, is expected to be taken following the executive session. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chelsea, are you around?
Aye.
Oh, thanks, sorry. You didn't, you don't have to say aye, but I just wanna make sure you're still hearing. All is opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll call you here in a minute.
It is? Got to wait a minute.
So we're out of the executive session and that was not fun. And it's not fun because it's unbelievable the talent that's sitting right here. So it's kind of a blessing we have.
I agree with that. I want to just say thank you to everybody. I know the energy, effort, stress that it took to put your thoughts together, put them down on paper, actually commit to going through this process. So I appreciate all of that.
Thank you for your desire to serve our city. And with that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to approve the appointment of Myra Navarro Gomez to fill the vacant City Council at-large B position.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember, Attkinson, second by Councilmember Hornby for City Council to approve the appointment of Myra Navarro Gomez to fill the vacant City Council at-large B position. Any other discussion or comments?
I'm just honored and happy that we have representatives that like our city and want to be serving in our, in our community. Just to let you know, you guys are awesome. You guys continue to do what you guys do and you guys are really appreciated. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye. Did you not hear me?
Oh, thank you.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, we'll have a ceremonial, what, February thirteenth? So, thanks again. There, I have, well, I gotta be careful what I say. When you sit there as a City Councilperson or as a mayor and you're like, my gosh, they're great. If you could just replace everybody here and have them there, it would be a successful government. So that just tells you how powerful you guys truly are. So thank you very much. There's other, you know, maybe okay opportunity to let you know there's other positions if you're interested to get on boards. If you're interested at all, please reach out to us and we'd love, love if that, that's something you desire. Okay, we'll go to the mayor's report. Are we good?
Yep.
Our Valley, Our Future is hosting a housing summit on February sixth and we're invited to communicate for more about density and housing needs in the valley. Thank you everybody for the planning commission that was last, last week for partnering as a joint meeting. I thought that was a very successful, I know there's going to be a lot of work that we're going to be doing. Good news is the Weydner multifamily project is underway and is expected to be completed by 2027. Actually, I think the permits are going to get issued here shortly and that'll show up on our 2025 books. It's obviously, it's a privately led project, but the, the city has supported this effort to help bring more multifamily development to Wenatchee. So this is a, this is a good, good thing for us. How many apartments is it going to be, do you remember? About two hundred units. So, sweet. Staff and I are headed over to Olympia, it says Monday, but we're actually got to go over there Sunday. We got with our state lobbyist representative, we're going to go over there. We have scheduled times with four or five people and, and we're thankful to get in there and obviously we're going to continue because of our next phase two for Confluence Parkway. So I think that's all I have. Where's everybody else at?
Is, am I the only person going to City Action Days?
Guess so.
Okay.
We met yesterday or something about that.
Association of Washington Cities is looking at bringing their annual conference to Wenatchee. It'll be one of three years, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight, or twenty-nine. And this is a chance-
Is, am I the only person going to City Action Days?
Guess so.
Okay.
We met yesterday or something about that.
Association of Washington Cities is looking at bringing their annual conference to Wenatchee. It'll be one of three years, '27, or '28, or '29, and this is a chance for us to really showcase our community and the good work that we're doing. We have a lot going on, and our, our city staff has worked so hard, and I am, I am so proud of them and all that they have done, and it would be great to be able to showcase it, showcase this, showcase this to the other communities, and that's all I have.
And Mayor Crawford and I are going to have a joint letter together to try to encourage the AWC here.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's important.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Cuevas?
Last weekend, I attended the Martin Luther King Jr. Multicultural Diversity at the...
Museum.
The museum. It was a great day to see our mariachi performers and our nonprofit organizations be there present together, achieving goals and merits, and representing our community. It was a great, great day to be there.
Who else?
I had a busy couple of weeks. WDA last week went over their strategic plan. They also have two new board members, Test that works for the Goodfellow Brothers and Market King Pizza, one of the owners there, so great new additions to the WDA Board. They have a good, good plan for the year. Also, Chamber, met with them. They have a new president, and they wanted to remind everybody the Chamber Dinner's coming. Should be a good time, and that's it for now.
I did have my first museum board meeting, so trying to get up to speed on that.
Oh, I also did meet with the Executive Director at Link, talking about their plans with us next year, so pretty aggressive. Done a lot of good work.
Great. Let's see. What am I missing, Danielle? Let's see. Oh, I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson, second by Councilmember Cuevas to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Thanks, Chelsea. I know you're not feeling well. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Yeah, thanks for bearing with you, guys.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.